It's a blustery fall day here in Colorado. Got my hot cup of coffee, leaves blowing around outside. It's cold. Got my favorite G2s lined up, ready to go. It's time to do some physics. I'm ready, I hope you're ready. Today, we're gonna get into modern physics. This is part one of two. Okay, so part one, modern physics is all about the electron and the electron cloud. So you've been learning about atoms since you were probably a fifth grader. And you know the atom is made up of the nucleus and then the electron cloud. So this whole first part, the whole first part of modern physics is the electron cloud. Part two, we're gonna talk about the nucleus and what's happening in the nucleus. Okay, so modern physics, also known as loosely tiny physics, particle physics, gets into the weird world of the super small. So weird things happen here. Things without mass can have momentum. Um, concept we have not talked about yet. The distinction between particles and waves becomes fuzzy. All right, the stuff we look at, like photons, are they a particle or are they a wave? They exhibit both, both properties. Um, elements can spontaneously break apart and make new elements. These are all new concepts for us. Um, we will start with a little bit of review. So stuff from waves that we will use here, that you need to know. Frequency. So remember, frequency is lowercase f and it is measured in hertz. Wavelength, lambda, measured in meters or we will maybe also run into nanometers. Okay, which is 10 to the negative ninth. The wave speed equation, good old V equals F lambda. We will use that. And we will also say C equals F lambda, because we'll be talking about light. What is a photon? Photon is a particle of light. Okay, now that is a very loose definition. Okay, I've heard it also described as a wave packet of light. All right, so um, we're talking about wave-particle duality. And when we're talking about photons, we will talk about how they exhibit wave and particle-like properties. Energy of a photon. E equals H F. All right, and we'll get into that more in a second. Other introductory stuff. How about the electron volt conversion? This is an energy unit. Usually, we use joules. So let's do a sample conversion real quick. Let's say we have five EVs. And you notice over here, these electron volt, um, numbers, those are representing energy. So we use those a lot. So let's convert this. And a lot of you probably know this unit cancelling, canceling method with the train tracks, as they're called. We want to cancel electron volt, so I'm gonna put it down here and I want to go to joules. So we'll put that up there. In one electron volt, there are 1.6 times 10 to the negative nineteenth joules. Okay, so let's multiply that out. Five times 1.6 to the negative nineteenth. And we get eight times 10 to the negative nineteenth. So that would be the number in joules. And you can see that that is very, very small. The electron volt unit is convenient, because we're talking about very tiny amounts of energy. All right, so we'll run into that a little bit as we go through this stuff. Okay, so energy of a photon, just like we said before, E equals H F. And that is on your equations page, right here. We can also say E is equal to H C over lambda. Okay, and the reason why is because if you rearrange this equation, so it says F equals, you will get C over lambda. So I'm simply subbing in velocity and wavelength there. Now, this is, this is very convenient if we are given the wavelength instead of the frequency. So remember, if you have frequency, you always have the wavelength. Or if you have the wavelength, you always have the frequency. And that's because the speed of light is constant, so we can always go between the two. Planck's constant, 6.63 times 10 to the negative 34th. That's if we're working in joules. If we are working in electron volts, we will use this. 4.14 times 10 to the negative fifteenth. All right, so just be aware, there are two Planck's constants depending on which unit we are working on. Remember back in chemistry, when you had to draw these? All right, don't draw this on your papers. Okay, you had to draw a bunch of particles and then you drew the rings. And we said, oh, look, two electrons can go here, then eight can go here, and so on and so on. And you had to draw all the atoms and it was kind of fun maybe for you, or you hated it, I don't know. Um, and we said energy levels and all that. This is not that. Okay, this is very, very different. Here, we are talking about the energy levels of a single electron and how that single electron can jump around to different energy levels. Okay, yes, it relates to what you had to draw here in chemistry, but very, very different. Okay, so ground state down here is the lowest level that the electron will exist in. Okay, and then, and then it goes up from there. So first excited state. This means that the electron has gained energy somehow. And so it's at an elevated state. The second excited state means it's gained even more energy. Okay, and then in here, there's actually lots and lots and lots of energy levels. They get squeezed together very, very tightly. Um, this is sometimes called E infinity. All right, and we don't really deal with this that much. We mostly deal with the, with the lower energy levels. Okay, now here are the really big things you need to know. These right here are very, very, very specific. Okay, and here's what I mean. Electrons can't just exist in any energy. So notice there's no line at negative five point, well, it'd be lower. There's no negative 5.1 level. Okay, so you can't have energy levels, you can't have electrons at levels between these. It will either be this, this, or this. Okay, and these numbers will change depending on what atoms and what electrons we are talking about. Okay, so no in-between. All right, can't be in-between here. That is very, very important and that will definitely be on your test. Okay, so let's say we have an electron that is at the first excited state. How does it get to the second excited state? How does it jump up here? Okay, and the answer is it absorbs energy. Okay, and we can say it absorbs a photon. Okay, or it absorbs light. So um, that's how we get from here to here. What if we have an electron here and it jumps down to this? Well, instead of absorbing energy, it has to be releasing energy. Okay, or photon. Energy is released or absorbed. Okay, now, it's also important to note that to get back down to the ground state, there are two possibilities. The electron could start here, jump here, and then it could do another jump, thus releasing another photon. Okay, so this would be two jumps and two photons. Or it can do one jump all the way from here to here. Okay, so instead of releasing two photons, this would be one photon released. And the key to know here is that photon would be at a higher energy. Okay, than these two. All right, now, that energy can be calculated using this. Okay, or in this case, the frequency could be calculated because we have the energy. All right, so you can see that since the energy jump from here to here is greater, that's gonna be a greater E. All right, and that's going to give us a greater frequency photon when we calculate it. All right, so E equals H F. Again, that's the third time we've written this on this page already. E equals H F helps us with this. Okay, all right, um, let's see. Last thing, we'll talk about with this diagram here. Let's say we go from ground state to first excited state. How much energy do we need to absorb to get from here to here? All you need to do is take the difference between the energy levels. what happens is it needs to absorb 5.5 minus 3, the difference between these. Okay, and that's gonna be 2.5 electron volts. Okay, now, what if it's 2.6 or 2.4 electron volts of energy? What if the photons hitting this thing trying to be absorbed are 2.4 or 2.6? What will happen is that energy will just pass on through. Okay, the electron will not accept it unless it is exactly 2.5 EV. Okay, now, the negative numbers. The negative numbers, we drop a lot actually. Okay, but um, it's the energy needed to escape. Okay, so this right here, sorry, not this is the energy needed to escape, only the last one. So we will say escape energy. Okay, now in chemistry, that is called ionization energy. We use that term physics as well. Okay, so if we, if this electron gets 5.5 electron volts, it will be free from the atom. It'll go away, so it will, it'll completely be removed. And that's why it's called ionization energy, because when we remove electrons, we ionize them. They become positive. All right, so that is the escape energy or ionization energy. Let's do a simple problem down here real quick. What wavelength of light must an electron absorb to jump from the first to the second state? Okay, so from here to here. How big of a jump is that? Energy equals two EVs. All right, and we want to find out what lambda is. So when we are working with wavelength, this equation is helpful. E equals H C over lambda. And then on our equations page or our constants page, we have got all of this, all of the Planck's constant stuff. All right, so we already talked about the difference between using joules and electron volts. And look at how nice the AP people are to us on this. They multiplied C by H for us. Okay, so since we have H C right here and we're in electron volts, we can actually use this. Okay, 1.24 times 10 to the third, or 1240. Okay, so that's where that comes from. And don't ask me why they multiplied it out for us, but they did. So this is 1240. And um, we would like to solve for our wavelength. Oops, I'm gonna rearrange this first. All right, so we're gonna get wavelength equals H C over the energy, which will be 1240 over 2. And so we get 620. All right, now, 620 watt. Let's look at this. When we're using this number, we're working in nanometers. When we're using this, we're working in joules and meters. Okay, so nanometers is a convenient wavelength unit for light. So we'll stick with nanometers there. Let's talk all about the photoelectric effect. Very, very important. This shows up on FRQs and multiple choice all the time. So the photoelectric effect simplified. Here it is. Some light right here shines on some atoms. The atoms steal the energy from the light or the photons. And the atoms are so excited about their new energy that they release electrons. Okay, it really is pretty simple. Okay, now you could, the particle physics world would get way more detailed with it than we are going to get. But really, it's just, oh, look, this light has energy. Now the electrons have the energy and the electrons can leave. Okay, so really what we're talking about is this right here. Okay, these electrons are getting enough energy so that they can leave the atom completely. All right, so in this case, it'd be 5.5 electron volts. Okay, so here's what's going on on a, on a tiny level that we cannot see. All right, and here's how it's set up. You've got these two plates and the light is coming in, and it says here UV light. And the electrons from this plate are traveling across this gap to this other plate. And a current can be read on a meter. Okay, now, I really would love it if you guys would go to this website. It is the FET site. And you can either just Google FET, go to FET and then find photoelectric under the waves, or you can type in this address and just play around with the simulation. I promise if you do this, what I'm about to go over on the next side will make a lot more sense to you. So pause the video and take a little bit of time to work, to work on that. Okay, go ahead. Okay, so hopefully the FET site gave you a visual of what we're talking about. Um, because it always helps to be able to see this stuff, of course. And we'll move on to this page. Here's the equation that describes the photoelectric effect in terms of energy. What I'm about to show you is just conservation of energy. All right, and here's what it looks like on your equations page. If I can find an equations page. Okay, it's this one right here. K max equals H F minus 5. Okay, now remember, this is just conservation of energy. Okay, and we'll break down each part. K max, this is energy given to the electron. And it's given to the electron by the photons. So here, H F, you guys know that E equals H F from the other side. And this is the photon's energy. And you see that is dependent on the frequency. The frequency will give us the photon's energy. Okay, and that was the mind-boggling thing here for scientists is they thought that this incoming light, it was more about the intensity that was gonna move these electrons, how bright the light is, in other words. But they found out it's more about the frequency of the light than the intensity. Okay, so that's the photon's energy. This is the incoming, incoming energy from the photons. And then we have this. Phi is the work function. In magnetism, remember, it is flux, but symbols are reused in physics. Here we have the work function. Okay, so the work function. Here's what I typed out for you guys. Work function or ionization energy. Think of it like this. The atoms cling on to their electrons. To get them free, it takes some energy to rip them from the atoms. Therefore, not all energy goes to the electron. Some of it must be used to separate the electron from its orbit. The more the work function, the tighter the electrons are held in place. So if we go back to the other side of our notes, this right here is the work function for this specific electron in this specific atom. All right, the ionization energy. Okay, so if we kind of review the whole equation at the same time, let's block this out right here. Let's say the atoms did not care about their electrons leaving. Okay, why do they cling on to them, by the way? Well, it's because the positive nucleus doesn't want to let those negatives go. Okay, so if the, if there was not that um, attraction, all of the energy from the photon would simply be given to the electron. Okay, but we have to work to get that electron off of there. So we have to subtract some energy from here and what is left over belongs to the electron. All right, important graph. You will see this, might have to sketch it yourself. I've seen it on multiple choice questions where you have to analyze it. And that's the basic sketch. K E over here and F O down here. Okay, all right. Now, this right here is the frequency required to get the, it's the minimum frequency required to get the electron to leave the atom. All right, and it is also called the cutoff frequency. Okay. And you notice this is where we start to have kinetic energy. So here's the deal. We shine lights of lower frequency. Let's say red light. Okay, and we keep increasing the frequency. All right, and up here is maybe violet, ultraviolet light, really, really high frequencies. Okay, so high energies. Let's, let's just put violet on here for kind of a reference. Okay, and then down here, we could have infrared, which we can't see, or maybe just red light. All right, and our frequency is increasing. Okay, and once we get to a certain frequency, finally electrons start getting ejected off of this plate and going to the other side. Okay, so that's what that graph is all about. And um, it is different for every atom. Okay, this frequency is different for every atom. All right, let's check out something called stopping potential. Okay, and we'll look at this diagram to help us with that. Say we've got some incoming red light. And let's say that that red light does have enough um, energy to get the electrons to leave for this particular atom. And so they start to go to the other side. But let's say we put a battery into the mix. Okay, so here, here's our, all of our electrons lined up here. And they're getting enough energy to come over here. But let's say negative, positive. We charge this system up. So over here, we're gonna put a bunch of negative charge. And over here, we're gonna put a bunch of positive charge. Okay, so now what we really have is a capacitor. And you learned all about those in the circuits unit and electrostatics. So now, the voltage here is great enough for these electrons never to make it to the other side. So basically, you kind of have a war between these two worlds. This is making the electrons have enough energy to want to go over here, but as they travel over here, as they start to get to the other side, they find this big wall of negative charge. And as you know, these little negatives don't like other negatives. So what happens is they get turned around, they go back to the other side. And you can make that happen on the FET simulation if you want to try that out. Okay, so you just increase the voltage in the simulation and the ammeter will go to zero once you get enough voltage. Okay, so that minimum voltage required to stop um, the electrons from going to the other side is called our stopping potential. Okay, so let's look at this. K max equals H F minus phi. Okay, what we are doing here is um, taking the K max and replacing it with Q V. Q V equals H F minus phi. All right, and the Q V, remember, comes back from electrostatics. Okay, so that's our potential energy of a charge being put under a voltage. Okay, so U equals Q V. That's where that comes from. So in summary of um, how this works, for these electrons to not make it across, Q V has to be equal to K max or greater. It could be greater, but usually we're talking about the minimum voltage to stop these from going across. Okay, obviously, a voltage greater than that would also stop them. So this is minimum voltage. Okay, and just remember, you can, you can take K max in the equation and replace it with Q V if we are talking about the stopping potential. Okay, last two pieces of notes and then we will go on to working some problems. Compton, okay, Compton scattering. Since photons can knock Since photons can knock off electrons in collision, it follows that we can talk about the momentum of a photon, which is super weird, because photons do not have mass, they are massless particles. Okay, so it can be reasoned through relativity, and actually E equals M C squared as well, that P is equal to H over lambda. Okay, now P, remember, is momentum. So remember back in Physics 1, okay, instead of electrons here, we had a pool ball. Then we had another pool ball, and then they were hitting and scattering and two dimensions and all that crazy collision stuff, and transferring of energy, or loss of energy and momentum. Okay, same thing here, but on a particle physics level, and we also introduce photons. Okay, so this right here is the momentum of the incoming photon. Alright, or any photon for that matter. Okay, and so what's happening here with Compton scattering is this photon is coming in, okay, and it's got enough energy to eject this electron right here. Okay, so for this one, we have E equals HF. Alright, and you notice that this photon right here is high frequency. Okay, lots and lots of energy. Okay, now this gains some kinetic energy, and that electron leaves. So this photon right here is low frequency. Okay, now this is a little bit different from the photoelectric effect and other things we've talked about on this video. Because here, after the collision, we get, we still have energy here to release a lower frequency photon, okay, and the electron, so it's kind of two, two things being released here. And the low frequency, E equals HF again. Alright, now we don't really, I haven't seen us have to do a lot of math with this, except maybe calculate the momentum of a photon. Okay, that's, that's really all we need to know about Compton. Okay, De Broglie, De Broglie, De Broglie, okay, you actually say that, De Broglie. Alright. So up here, if waves can act like particles and have collisions and momentum and all that, can't particles also act like waves? Okay, if we rearrange this equation here, we get lambda equals H over P. Okay, and this right here is the wavelength for a particle. Okay, which is super weird, okay, why a part, why do particles have a wavelength? Alright, electrons traveling very fast, we can talk about their wavelength. Okay, now to kind of begin to grasp this concept, I would love it if you could watch this Dr. Quantum double slit experiment video. It's a cartoon, it's pretty fun, okay. Check it out, and it is, it is mind-blowing, you will watch it and have probably nine questions, okay. But watch it, it'll, it'll kind of help you out with this a little bit. Last thing before we do that, just remember, we could also say M V right here. So if we had, say, an electron moving really fast, we could, we could use that to calculate the De Broglie wavelength. Alright, watch the video, and then we'll do some example problems. Alright, pause and work the problem, and we'll go over it. Okay, hopefully you've worked it. Let's check it out. We've got this same diagram we had on the front side. Energy level diagram, determine the frequency of the lowest energy photon that could ionize the atom. Okay, so we're down here in the ground state, and we are going all the way to E equals zero, okay. So here's the electron, it is being ionized. The lowest frequency we want to find, this right here, by the way, that is the work function, energy required to release the electron completely. So we have E equals HF. Alright, or we can say frequency is equal to H, or sorry, E over H. Alright, now our energy is 5.5 electron volts, and Planck's constant, we are gonna use the 4.14 times 10 to the 15th. Okay, that's the one that's for electron volts. If you calculate that correctly, you will get a frequency of 1.32 times 10 to the 15th hertz. Okay, lowest energy photon. Alright, part B. We'll work in a different color so we can tell what's going on with the diagram. Assume an atom has been excited to the negative one state, determine the wavelength of photon for each spontaneous transition. Okay, so we're up here, there's three things that can happen. Okay, the electron can go from here to here, call that E one. The electron can go from here all the way down to here, let's call that E two. And then the electron can also do this, let's call that E three. Okay. Alright, now we would like the wavelength of the photon released. So as these electrons jump, here we're gaining a photon. As these electrons jump down levels, we're gonna get photons released. So we'll do one for E one, another one for E two, and another one for E three, and calculate those wavelengths. So we know E is equal to H C over lambda. And that means we can say lambda is equal to H C over E. And that's what we're gonna use to calculate each one of these. So lambda equals H C over E. Okay, we will use 1240 for H C, right off our constants page. And that means we need to stay in electron volts. So for E one, it is a 2 E V jump, okay, from the one to three. So that gives us 620 nanometers. Okay. For the next one, we get 1240. And it is a 4.5 electron volt jump, which gives us 276 nanometers. Finally, for the last one, we get 1240 over 2.5. E three is a 2.5 jump, and we get 496 nanometers. And by the way, they're all coming out in nanometers because of the one, the constant that I'm using, off your constants page. Okay, part C. This one was a little bit tricky. So assume we're at ground state down here, and show the possible transitions from ground state when we are irradiated with electromagnetic radiation, and they give us the wavelengths. Okay, so what we need to do is calculate, based on these wavelengths, what the maximum and minimum energies are. So we're starting at this lower wavelength, and on some dial or something, they are cranking the, cranking the wavelength up. Okay, which also means the frequency is going down. Alright, and so we're getting this whole range of energies. Now we need to figure out what the minimum and maximum energies we're gonna get to compare them with these jumps here. Okay, and remember, we're starting down here at the bottom. Okay, so first of all, I am going to, we could work in meters, but I'm gonna change these to nanometers. So this is 250 nanometers, if I convert that, and this right here is 1,000 nanometers. Okay, so our energy maximum is equal to H C over lambda. And I want this to come out in electron volts, so that's actually why I changed those to nanometers. We can say 1240, and I'm gonna use the small wavelength. Because the smaller the wavelength, that means the higher the frequency and the more energy we're gonna get. So if you do this math, you will get 4.96 electron volts. Alright, now let's do the E minimum for this range of radiation, H C over 1,000. Or lambda, I should have written. Okay, so we're gonna get 1240 over 1,000. And we come out with 1.24 electron volts. Okay, so as they use these different frequencies and wavelengths here, we have a minimum of this amount of electron volts being produced, and a maximum of this. Okay, so anything at or between these different energies, we are going to get this electron to move. Okay, so this is a 2.5 jump from here to here. If we look down here, 2.5 is between this, so that is going to be a possible jump. Okay, now this right here is 4.5. Alright, so from the ground state, those are the two possible. Now notice there is this jump that would fit in there, but it's not from the, from the ground state. Okay, so we want the transitions from the ground state. So these two are the possible, so this 2.5 and this 4.5. Alright, and drawing those on the diagram would get you those points. Okay, that's kind of a mathematical problem, hopefully pretty much solved all of the different things you would have to be able to deal with with this diagram. Okay, let's go on and do some multiple choice. Name that 90 song. Alright, time for some multiple choice. And why don't you pause and work this whole page, and then we'll go over it. Alright, number one. Here's what's going on here, we've got one of these, one of these energy level diagrams. And it is saying that the ionization energy is negative E O. Alright. And so we need this much energy to completely eject the electron. But then in addition to that, it's gonna have an extra, extra kinetic energy. Okay, so what it needs is three E Os to get that extra two. Okay, because this energy is just going to be used to release the electron. We're gonna need another two for that kinetic energy. Okay, so how do we relate that to Planck's constant and all that, and wavelength? So E is equal to H C over lambda. Alright, so we have 3 E equals H C over lambda. And if you solve that for lambda, you will get A. Number two. This one uses the diagram on the right, over here. Hypothetical, one electron atom in its highest excited state can emit photons of these ranges, which is a possible winner here. Okay, so if you look at these, my eye was immediately drawn to this one, because it's 2, 3, and 5. Okay, but the problem here is that it's a trick. Okay, because it, it doesn't say 1 E here, and if you look at this jump, that is a 1 E jump, so it's gonna have an extra emission. If you look at A, we have a 2, a jump of 3 right here, a jump of 2 right here, and a jump of 5 right here. Okay, 3, 2, 5. Alright, because remember, they can jump in two, in two separate intervals there. So this one would have an extra band on the emission spectrum. Okay, let's see. Number three. Okay, the De Broglie wavelength. Alright, well, what's gonna relate wavelength and momentum? We have this equation. Wavelength is equal to Planck's constant over the momentum. And that comes right off our equations page. And so this is in an inverse relationship, okay, so the answer is D. So you gotta be careful, because it kind of looks like C is the answer to that. Alright, so any relationship that is a 1 over is going to have this graph. Alright, so that's kind of a simple, analyze what type of relationship is happening problem. You don't even really have to know what these things are to get that one right. Alright, number four. These two go with this diagram. Which of the following photon energies could not be found in the emission spectra? Okay, so some things you gotta watch for in this. Don't use these numbers. Every problem we've done thus far has had the energies over here. Okay, so this is actually kind of a good test to make sure we are paying attention to the diagram, the energies are over here. Alright, so the answer is D. Alright, there are no jumps in here, there are no transitions that are 4. So between 7 and 4, that's a 3, between 4 and 1, that's a 3, between 2 and 1, that's a 1. This is a 2 right here. So I've got a jump of 1, 2, 3, and this would be 3 as well, and then I've got a 5 transition right there. So I've got all four of those, but I didn't have any, I didn't have any 4 electron volt differences. Okay, no differences of 4 E V between any of these lines. Alright, which of the following transitions will produce the longest wavelength? Okay, well, we have this, E equals H C over lambda. Alright, and so we can also say this, E equals HF. And this means that the greater the frequency, the higher the energy. Okay, but frequency and wavelength are inversely related. So if we look at this one, which is the answer, this is only a 1, this is only a 1 electron volt jump. Okay, so that means a low energy, which is gonna give us a low frequency. Okay, and a low frequency means the longest wavelength, because we can look at this, V equals F lambda. Okay, if the frequency goes up, the wavelength goes down, if this is gonna stay constant, which it does, because it's the speed of light. Alright, number six. Okay, these questions show up quite a bit. These two are correct. Alright, and the answer is D, the intensity does not affect the speed of the electrons. The intensity only affects how many electrons The intensity only affects how many electrons you get. Okay, so the brightness of the light shining is the intensity. Alright, so if we use a brighter light, those electrons are not gonna gain more speed, there're just gonna be more of them. So remember this, K max equals HF minus the work function. Alright, so these are the things that affect the kinetic energy, so the frequency of light right there. And the nature of the surface, that is talking about the work function. Okay, what the surface is made up of is going to give us information about the work function. Alright, try the next page. Pause it and then we'll go over that page. Number seven, answer is A. Alright, and this is just cutoff frequency. So the graph we talked about in the notes. Number eight, the answer is D. Okay, and once we are past the cutoff frequency, um, we have intensity over here. Or sorry, we have current over here and we have intensity down here. Okay, so this is the brightness of the light. Alright? And the brighter that light gets, the more current we are going to get. So the intensity is gonna affect number of electrons. Okay? That is important, number of electrons. So um more electrons equals more current, right? Okay, so we increase the intensity of the light, we're gonna get more current. Number nine. The answer is B. Okay? So we have lambda equals H over P. Alright, if the momentum doubles, its De, its De Broglie wavelength is gonna go down by um, is multiplied by a factor of half. Okay, so if this doubles, we have a two on the bottom of the fraction, so this is gonna be half what it was. Alright, number twenty eight, or sorry, number ten on mine, it's twenty eight. Um, answer is two P. Okay, so now this one gets into frequency. Frequency and momentum. So let's start out with this. We know lambda equals H over two, or sorry, over P. And what are we gonna do here? We are going to um, double the frequency from what it was before. Okay, so off to the side here, if we do, if we see how frequency and wavelength relate, we know if we do two times the frequency, we get one half lambda. The frequency doubles, lambda goes down to a half of what it is, and that's just because V equals F lambda. Okay? Two of these, we have to have half of that to keep it equal to the same velocity, which is the speed of light. Okay? So if I have half the, half of the lambda over here, okay, my wavelength goes down to what, a half of what it was. Then my momentum over here has to double. Okay, so really, these are kind of the same question, just asked in a different way. And final multiple choice for the day is B. Okay, so we need to increase, so what do we want? We want more electron, electrons per unit time, but less kinetic energy per electron. So if we want more electrons, we need to increase the intensity. So I saw that and I eliminated all of these. Okay, well, I guess we couldn't technically eliminate this yet cuz we don't know yet, but anyway, that's beside the point. Okay, and um, and increase the wavelength. Okay, we want the kinetic energy to go down. So if the kinetic energy goes down, we need the frequency to go down to cause that. This causes this. Okay? Now, if we want our frequency to go down, our wavelength has to go up. Okay, so you see a lot of frequency wavelength relationship type test questions. Okay, so um, increase both is the answer. Okay, the after party, your teacher may assign this one or this one, this is a really good one for you to do because it has experimental um, data and graphing and analyzing modern physics uh, as far as an experiment goes, so I would really highly recommend this one. And then maybe this one to solidify some of the things that we did. Uh, your teacher does have access to the keys to both of these. And uh, we won't do them in the video just because of time. But I hope you've had a good time learning um, some modern physics, we'll go over the nucleus in the next video. Thanks for watching.